Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order. With that, I'm going to ask Ken Kelly to say the opening prayer. Would everyone please rise? It'll be followed by a salute to our flag.
Almighty God, grant us the wisdom to make decisions that are in the best interest of all our residents. May the heavenly Father of us all bless those who have given the ultimate sacrifice and service to our country, and may He watch over and protect our servicemen and women, now guarding the gates of freedom. Join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And lastly, Mayor, if I may just take a moment, I'd like to wish the new councilmen, Councilman Grillo and Councilman Lembo, the best for the year and for your term. And God bless everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. With that, Terri.
(inaudible)
This is my chief of staff, Ken Kelly.
(inaudible)
Can you come on up here?
(inaudible)
If you need it, give me a minute.
I, Kennedy O'Brien.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state under the authority of the people.
And in this state under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially and justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of mayor.
All the duties of mayor.
Of the borough of Sereville.
Of the borough of Sereville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
To help me guide.
To help me guide.
At this time, we have to swear in before people.
(inaudible)
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 This is my chief of staff, Ken Kelly.
(inaudible)
Can you come on up here?
(inaudible)
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 I, Kennedy O'Brien. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state under the authority of the people.
And in this state under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially and justly perform.
And impartially and justly perform.
All the duties of mayor.
All the duties of mayor.
Of the borough of Sereville.
Of the borough of Sereville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
To help me guide.
To help me guide.
Congratulations.
At this time, the Sereville Emergency Squad will take their oath of office for President Dexter Thomas, for Vice President Marson Cisla, for Captain Stanley Pilch, Assistant Kevin Offe, for Assistant Captain Burkant Safrickia, First Lieutenant Mohammed Saladin, Second Lieutenant Peter Salas.
(inaudible)
The Grillo family, come on up. First, second, third, customs. (laughter) Everybody ready? Raise your hand, state your name.
I.
I, Stephen Grillo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially and justly perform.
And impartially and justly perform.
All the duties of councilmen.
All the duties of councilmen.
Of the borough of Sereville.
Of the borough of Sereville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
To help me guide.
To help me guide.
At this time, the Sereville Emergency Squad will take their oath of office for President Dexter Thomas, for Vice President Marson Cisla, for Captain Stanley Pilch, Assistant Kevin Offe, for Assistant Captain Burkant Safrickia, First Lieutenant Mohammed Saladin, Second Lieutenant Peter Salas.
(inaudible)
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 I.
I, Stephen Grillo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state under the authority of the people.
And in this state under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially and justly perform.
And impartially and justly perform.
All the duties of councilmen.
All the duties of councilmen.
Of the borough of Sereville.
Of the borough of Sereville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
To help me guide.
To help me guide.
Congratulations.
At this time, the Sereville Emergency Squad will take their oath of office for President Dexter Thomas, for Vice President Marson Cisla, for Captain Stanley Pilch, Assistant Kevin Offe, for Assistant Captain Burkant Safrickia, First Lieutenant Mohammed Saladin, Second Lieutenant Peter Salas.
(inaudible)
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 The Grillo family, come on up.
(inaudible)
First, second, third, customs.
(laughter)
Everybody ready? Raise your hand. State your name.
I.
I, Stephen Grillo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially and justly perform.
And impartially and justly perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
Of the borough of Sereville.
Of the borough of Sereville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
To help me guide.
To help me guide.
Congratulations.
(applause)
Do I have to read this? Do not turn the microphone off when done speaking.[400.93][400.93](laughter) Well, I'm very honored to be asked today by all of these good people who have committed their lives to serving our community. They are to be praised, and especially to our mayor, for the fifth time. Was there any other mayor that was elected?
There were many mayors.
Huh?
Many mayors.
Not at five times?
No.
Not five times, no. So, once you go to five times, you keep going for the rest of your life. So, let us bow our heads in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we ask anointing upon our mayor in this new year that he has begun to be the mayor of our great people of Sereville. And we ask you, Father, to bless all of these councilmen, and especially all those sworn in today for the first time. Be with them, dear Lord, and give them strength and courage to carry out their duty. And send your Holy Spirit to hover protectively over this mayor and all the people of this great town. Send your holy angels to hover protectively over them, so that this will be a successful year and that they will accomplish much for the honor and glory of God. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Now, we go.
(inaudible)
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 First statement of publication, Terri.
Yes, Mayor, please be advised that, first, before we go ahead and do that, I'd like to advise that statements have been received from the Middlesex County Clerk certifying the election of Mayor Kennedy O'Brien for a four-year term, Councilman Stephen Grillo for a three-year term, and Councilman Pat Lembo for a three-year term. May I have a motion to receive and file these statements?
Mayor, I move the statements to be received and filed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Roll call, Terri.
Mayor, be advised that this reorganization meeting of the mayor and borough council being held on Friday, January 1, 2016, has been posted and advertised in accordance with Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. Councilman Buchanan.
Here.
Grillo.
Here.
Kilpatrick.
Here.
Lembo.
Here.
Novak.
Here.
Rittenhouse.
Here.
At this time, I'm going to call Past Chief Richard Mulligan forward. Monsignor, you better come up. They're firemen, they're honorable people, but they're no strangers to sin.[580.41][580.41](laughter) The chief has done an exemplary and an extraordinary job this year, and is with sadness but with pleasure and honor that I present him his ex-chief badge, and I wanted to introduce him personally to Monsignor, so he doesn't misconfess.[600.16][600.16](laughter) Congratulations. May the blessing of Almighty God, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit be upon you and remain with you forever. (applause) I'd like to call up Fire Chief Vincent Ranowitz, First Assistant Chief George Gavron, and Second Assistant Chief Stephen Cankett.
We're going to do them one at a time.
We're doing them one at a time. Vinnie, come on up.
(inaudible)
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 At this time, I'm going to call Past Chief Richard Mulligan forward. Monsignor, you better come up. They're firemen, they're honorable people, but they're no strangers to sin.[700.43][700.43](laughter) The chief has done an exemplary and an extraordinary job this year, and is with sadness but with pleasure and honor that I present him his ex-chief badge, and I wanted to introduce him personally to Monsignor, so he doesn't misconfess.[730.22][730.22](laughter) Congratulations. May the blessing of Almighty God, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit be upon you and remain with you forever. (applause) Thank you, Monsignor, the horse center.[736.22][736.22](laughter) I'd like to call up Fire Chief Vincent Ranowitz, First Assistant Chief George Gavron, and Second Assistant Chief Stephen Cankett.
We're going to do them one at a time.
Vinnie, come on up.
(inaudible)
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 At this time, the Serval Emergency Squad will take their role of office for President Dexter Thomas, for Vice President Marson Cisla, for Captain Stanley Pilch, Assistant-
Kevin Ock.
Kevin Ock. For Assistant Captain Burkant Soikia, First Lieutenant Mohammed Saladin, Second Lieutenant Peter Salas.
President, okay? Aye.
Kevin Ock.
Do Salas where?
Do Salas where.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the same.
And the government established in the United States.
And the government established in the United States.
And in this state, under the authority of people.
And in this state, under the authority of people.
To go faithfully.
That I will be faithful.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of- Of the Serval Emergency Squad. Of the Borough of Serval. Performing the best of my ability. To help me guide. Thank you, guys. Dexter? We've got to come back in silence.
Fellas.
Dexter first? Yeah.
Thank you, Art. A very special thanks, and all of our thanks, our gratitude, and our respect to Serval's first responders, our police, our fire, and our first aid, who are always there when we need them, and they wait to serve, they take an oath to serve, as you just heard, so from the bottom of my heart, and representing all the people of Serval, to our first responders, thank you, a happy new year, a safe new year, and a prosperous new year. Thank you very much. So, to the firemen and the first aid, you've been given a special dispensation by the Monsignor, so the rest of the day is yours to misbehave as you see fit. But tomorrow, you've got to go back to behaving yourselves, so. With that, we're going to go to the remarks of the mayor and council, so I will begin with Steve Grillo. Steve, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon and thank you. I'm truly honored to be sworn in today, have the opportunity to serve the people of the Borough of Serval. I'd like to congratulate everyone that's been sworn in today, including Mayor Kennedy O'Brien and Councilman Pat Lembo. I look forward to working with you over the next three years. I would also like to thank my wonderful family, my supportive and beautiful wife Lauren, Assemblyman John Wazneski, Chairman Tom Palando, the Serval Democratic Organization, and the members of the Borough Council. I thank you all for your support, I wish you health and happiness in the new year, and I look forward to serving you on the Borough Council. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, Councilman Lembo?
I'd just like to wish everyone a happy new year, and I very much look forward to working with everyone, with the mayor, with my colleagues on the council, with all our appointed officials, our Borough employees, all our great volunteers, and all our veterans' groups. I'm hoping that the New Year's resolution is that we can put politics aside and act in the best interest of the residents of Serval this year. Thank you.
Our new council president, Dan Buchanan.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy New Year, everyone. Hope everyone had a safe, happy holiday season, and hopefully your resolutions take effect, and you keep your resolutions for a long time this year. I look forward to working together with all of you. I want to congratulate Steve and Pat. It's going to be an interesting learning experience, and I look forward to working with both of you. Congratulations again, Mayor, on your fifth election. And to the fire and first aid, congratulations on getting sworn in today, and we wish you the most safe year and the best of luck. Other than that, I just want to say to everyone, look forward to making Serval great again, moving the recreation department, not just sports, expanding what recreation means, and it's going to be a very good year. Lastly, I just wanted to extend an invitation for everyone out here for refreshments afterwards at the Dem had to quarters at Shoprate, and thank you very much.
Councilwoman Novak?
Yes, I'd just like to say happy new year to everybody. I hope we all have a safe new year. I'd like to congratulate the mayor, and Pat, and Steve, and look forward to working with you for the betterment of the residents of the town. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kilpatrick?
Once again, the same, happy new year to everyone, and congratulations again to Steve, to Pat, and to you, Mayor. And congratulations to really the whole entire town of Serval, because I think we have an amazing team here of individuals that are willing to work hard to make Serval even greater than what it already is. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rittenhouse?
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations, Mayor, on your reelection, and Pat and Steve, congratulations, looking forward to working with you. Thank you to our special services, our police, fire, first aid, and also all of our Borough workers, looking forward to a great new year, also our veterans groups, and I wish everybody a happy new year and a prosperous one.
I would like to congratulate and welcome Pat Lembo and Steve Grillo. I look forward to working with you, as well as the rest of the governing body. As a note, after this meeting, we will be serving refreshments down at the American Legion. A very special thank you, as always, to the veterans of the United States of America, and for all those who did stand guard at the gates of freedom, and give us that liberty that we enjoy so much today. So, Ken, to yourself and to the other veterans that you represent, my humblest thanks. With that, a couple of things. I had some very good friends who retired this year from the Borough. The first was Judy Smith, who was my secretary for many years, and just a great person, and when I spoke to her before Christmas, she was thoroughly enjoying her retirement, so I wish her very, I wish her well and happiness and good health. And our most recent retiree is a very good friend of mine named Ruben Selgado. So, yesterday, they threw a little party for him, I was unable to attend due to responsibilities of work, but Ruben is, as we say, my brother in blood, and in Spanish it comes out, something el toro, but you get the gist of it. He is a good guy, a great man, and I wish him the very best of health and prosperity and fun in his retirement. This is, this begins, I think, my 16th or 17th year in office, so Terry, the clerk, decided that after 16 years, my office needed to be refreshed. And so, if you ever wonder how we spend our money, so once every 16 years, you get your office painted, and I think you're talking about new drapes, you and Janice, so thank you, thank you for that. We'll see if the budget can do that. A very special thank you to my friend Monsignor McCarthy, who invited me to his 50th anniversary mass as a priest, and he made special notice to me, he said, "Mayor," he said, "when you come to the church," he said, "and you knock on the door, tell the ushers to seat you with my family from Ireland." He said, "If you come late, there's a good chance you're going to end up in the church basement watching it on television monitors." And I said, "Monsignor, as an elected official, humility can be a good thing." He said, "That's true, but then I wouldn't be able to show you off, so come early." Which I did, and he did. So Monsignor, as always, you have a very special and warm spot in my heart. And with that, I'll begin by saying, "Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and then I'm both honored and humbled that you have expressed your faith in me as your mayor by electing me to a fifth term. I take my oath and duty seriously, knowing it is the responsibility of the mayor and council to provide service to you, the residents of our community, in the most efficient and economically prudent and responsible way. I pledge that I will continue to perform those duties with the highest standard of ethics, and to treat you with the dignity and respect you deserve." And that, I mean, from the bottom of my heart. A very special thanks to my wife Janice, who has stood by me these many, many years in public office, and to my son Patrick. Thank you. No, Terry, I think I lost it. Oh, no, I didn't. Okay, so today is a ceremonial day, which means we have the rest of the year to fight and argue, but today, it's New Year's Day, and I'm just appointing, hopefully, people without issue, and we can have issues. I have two more meetings. Under the rules of the Borough, the mayor has the ability to appoint for the first 30 days. So that being said, for a one-year term, I'm going to appoint David Samuel and CME Associates as Borough Engineers. For a one-year term, Robert Clark and the firm Abruzzi McDermott Maestro and Murphy. For a one-year term as Auditor, Whisson Company. For a one-year term as Bond Counsel, McCarter and English. For a one-year term as Financial Advisor, Phoenix Advisors. One year of the Municipal Prosecutor, Francis Womack. Public Defender for a one-year term, Roselli and Roselli. Special Counsel on Tax Matters for a one-year term, James Nolan and Associates. For a one-year, Special Counsel on ABC Matters, Shane Schaefer and Rafanella. Is there, wait, two more?
Mayor, I move the-
Wait a minute, if you would, Council President. Under Occupational Health Services for a one-year term, Raritan Bay Medical, and for Municipal Planner for a one-year term, John Leon Cavello. Council President?
I move the appointments be approved on roll call vote, with the exception of Planner, we table?
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes, with comment. I'd like to know if we can have in the contract for Labor Council specify that Robert Clark is the actual attorney that represents the Borough of Serval?
He is named as the lead attorney, just as Dave Samuel is named for CME, I believe.
I realize that, but I'd like it specified in the contract that he is the one that represents the Borough of Serval.
I don't know, can that be done, or do we need to redo?
You can specifically identify the individual who's going to be assigned to handle Serval, so we can do that. Matter of fact, when we do that with the contract, I'll make sure I specify that, Mayor.
All right, Terry, if you would let that law firm know of this stipulation?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. You have more, the rest of the roll call?
Yes.
Okay, on the Board of Adjustment, a four-year term for Rosetta Fisher, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan?
No.
Grillo?
No.
Kilpatrick?
No.
Lembo?
Yes.
Novak?
No.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Okay, Board of Health, a reappointment for a three-year term for Joe Nodorangelo, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Who moved that, Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Roll call.
Second was Councilwoman Novak?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Environmental Commission, the reappointment of Ernie Reed, Lee Mulligan-
Mayor, at this time, I'd like to table the Environmental Commission to see, I would really like to look into if we can combine this with the Recycling Commission.
Second?
Second. Sorry.
Well, this is a setup, okay. Motion made and seconded.
That's to combine with Recycling-
Well, just table.
Review.
Just table. Table for discussion.
Looking forward to combine with-
Now, you understand that when you table something, you are the single person amongst the 8 billion people on this earth that can take it off the table.
No, that's incorrect, Mayor. Anybody that voted along in the affirmative may take it off the table.
Okay, we'll see.
Who seconded that motion, Mayor?
Me.
Council President?
Yes.
Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
No.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
No.
Okay, Human Relations Commission, the reappointment of Bonnie Constad to a three-year term, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes, with comment. I'm going to speak to Mindy Schiffman on this. We have several vacancies and resignations. We had one individual on here since 2011, and a vacancy since 2012. We need to see where this committee is going and how we can make it amped up.
But is it yes to this appointment?
Yep.
Grillo?
Yes, with the same comments as Councilman Buchanan.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Commission on Aging, the reappointment to-
Mayor, at this time, I'd like to table this. I had a couple of questions about the position by Donna Cookta. I wanted to confirm.
You're tabling everything, or just Donna Cookta?
I'll table the whole thing until I can get some answers. Thank you.
More stuff is afoot. All right, Cultural Arts Council.
I need a roll call on that. Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
No.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
No.
Okay, Cultural Arts Council, the reappointment of-
If I may, I'd like to table this as well, as we discussed earlier in my comments about expanding recreation. We had six people apply for this, and there's over 12 people on it, so I'd like to have it tabled until we can find out how we can grow this committee and maybe combine it with recreation.
Okay, I'm going to make a point right now. From the last, or one of the last couple minutes from the Recreation Board, there was a motion made to give the Recreation Director a five-year contract, and it was supposed to be brought up here, but I guess the election got in the way. But I will be adamantly opposed for the Recreation Department to be expanded further than its current charter has, for the sole purpose of giving someone a raise. I see it serves no purpose. These are dedicated people who have been serving for years, and I'm not quite getting what your game is, but it will come out in the coming year. So there was a motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Novak?
Yes, or Vicki, doesn't matter.
Okay. Roll calls, Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
No.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
No.
Okay, Library Board of Trustees, is this going to be combined with recreation? If not, then I'd like to reappoint for a five-year term Bernardine Polchowski, Christine Dominic, and my alternate for one year, Karen Perno. Is there a second? Is there a motion, actually?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Okay, on the Recreation Advisory Commission, the reappointment for three-year terms for Lorraine Penai, Jen O'Neal, Helen Bruno-Racui, Robert Havens, Elise Barone, Martin Biancomano, Donna Zaleski, for the unexpired term for Joe Schleyline, Christian Habinski, is there a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion to table this?
Table the Recreation-
Yes, we need to review the whole thing.
Second.
Oh, my God. Oh, my God.
There was a motion made before that table.
Table takes precedence.
Is that your legal interpretation there, counselor?
Mayor, that's correct, according to Robert's rules of-
Ah, okay. This isn't an expansion of Serval AA, is it? Okay.
So I have Councilman Buchanan tabling the appointments for the Recreation Advisory Commission, who seconded that motion, please?
I do.
All right, roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
No.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
No.
All right, Open Space Committee, as my designee for a three-year term, the reappointment of Joe Cups, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
I'm going to second Councilwoman Novak, Councilperson Buchanan for roll call.
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Okay, Recycling Commission for three-year terms, the reappointment of Daniel Archipinti-
Mayor, at this time, the same before, I'd like to table this until we look at the possibility of combining recycling with environmental.
Second.
Roll call.
That was Councilwoman Novak who made that motion, I'm sorry, but who seconded it? Councilperson Buchanan, thank you. Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
No.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
No, with comment. Counselor, maybe you can advise us, there is an environmental meeting scheduled for this week, this coming week. What is the status of that? Based on the action taken by council today?
This didn't abolish the committee, this simply didn't make any appointments to the committee.
Everyone would be a holdover.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Green Team, I'm going to reappoint for three-year terms Elise Barone, Terry Yetsko, Rebecca Garbowski, Daniel Mayonara, Donna Zaleski, Dan Archipinti, Kira Gagliardi, and Brian Rubio to take the place of Bonnie Brady, who moved down to the shore. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. I had a motion, and I had a second, thank you.
All right, roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Okay, for a five-year term to the Housing Authority, the reappointment of George Gonzalez-Gomez, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
All right, to the JIF, as the employee, Dan Frankel, as the alternate, Wayne Cronowski, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
As the Community Development Block Grant Administrator, Daniel Mayonara and Wayne Cronowski, is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Novak, seconded by Councilman Rittenhouse. Roll call, Councilman Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Okay, Community Development Block Grant Committee, the reappointment of Reni Travisonno, Pete Martin, and Don Newton.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Okay, Liaison to the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts, the reappointment of Kathy Federer.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
As reappointment for one-year terms to liaison to the Veterans Alliance, Ken Kelly and Rich Kamowski, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Headed a motion by Councilwoman Novak, seconded by Councilman Rittenhouse.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Okay, Equal Opportunity Housing Officer, Dan Frankel, Public Agency Compliance Officer, Dan Frankel, Mayor's Designee to the Middlesex County Solid Waste Advisory Council, Bernie Bailey, Lower Raritan Watershed Area Steering Committee, Don Newton, all for a one-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Okay, for the Emergency Management Coordinator, as Barry Ek had recommended, deputy would be Bruce Marsinsik, Tom Fogarty, Chris Bardslay, Joe Cups, Dexter Thomas, Deborah Shadlack, Jen Krasinski, Mike Fulham, Joe Waltske, and Don Newton, Mike Fulham for hazmat, Glenn Skarsinski, Barry Ek, John Bartlinsky, Dave Lasco, the Middlesex County Department of Health, Bernie Bailey as an alternate to Dave Pavlik, Dan Frankel, Bob Smith, Ed Agulies, and Walter and Wendy Witasjak. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Local Emergency Planning Committee, Barry Ek, Joan Kimball, Tom Fogarty, Bruce Marsinsik, Mike Fulham, Dexter Thomas, Joe Waltske, and Don Newton, Deborah Shadlack, Ed Agulies, Bernie Bailey as an alternate for Dave Pavlik, Chris Bardslay, Jen Krasinski, and then from business, DuPont Ashland Chemical, Alzo Pharmatechs, AES, Red Oak, JCPN, Gerdau, Amesteele, PSENG, Reliant Energy, CME Associates, NCUA. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Mayor, at this time, I'd like to make an appointment to the Technology Board of Ricky Melendez.
Second.
I would also ask that the other positions that Ricky interview and look over the resumes of the other people and give us a recommendation as to the other members that should be on this committee.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
No.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
No.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to instruct the clerk to get me a copy of the tape from when this ordinance was changed. If my memory serves me correct, and that's always subject to correction, when we did this ordinance, it was an adjustment on the cable TV committee, and it was basically changing it or upgrading it from cable to technology. I was just informed at this meeting by Councilwoman Novak that once again, the Democratic Party has stripped more power from the mayor and that it is strictly their appointment. Now, I hate sitting on my left is the borough attorney who wrote this ordinance and never once told me that this power would be stripped from me in this ordinance. So, could be wrong, but I'm instructing the clerk to get me a copy of the tape to see what we discussed during this ordinance.
Mayor?
It's consistent, but it is really annoying.
Mayor, I'd just like to say I believe this was, we changed the media advisory board, not the cable advisory board, and you were presented like everybody else with --
Understood, Mary.
-- what the original was and what was being removed. It had a line for what was being removed and what was being added. Thank you.
Okay. Mary, he's your guy, so, I mean, I would expect you to defend him. Okay. Any resolutions, Terry?
Mayor, the only resolutions that we have are those listed on the consent agenda that we discussed earlier.
Okay.
Of those appointments that were made today.
Okay. Any other business?
Hold on, Mayor.
Terry, number 20 is tabled.
Yeah. Municipal Planner.
Yeah. Municipal Planner was discussed earlier, but by a motion made earlier in this meeting, it was tabled, so that one will be removed. Can I have a roll call to accept the consent agenda res -- actually, we want to open to the public?
I need to open to the public portion the consent agenda. Are there any questions on the resolutions for consideration on the consent agenda? Being no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move the public portion to be closed and the consent agenda resolutions to be approved on roll call vote with the exception of number 20, which has been removed.
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Okay. Any other new business, Terry?
No, Mayor, that's all I have on this business.
All right. At this time, I'm going to open the public portion for questions or comments on any and all issues. Other any?
Mayor, did we go down the standing committees?
We didn't. Okay. The standing committees will be as follows. I'm going to call out the last names of the elected officials, and the order is first, second, and third. Administration and Finance, Novak, Grillo, Kilpatrick. Planning and Zoning, Grillo, Rittenhouse, Lembo. Public Safety, Lembo, Buchanan, Rittenhouse. Public Works, Kilpatrick, Novak, Buchanan. Recreation, Buchanan, Kilpatrick, Novak. Water and Sewer, Rittenhouse, Lembo, and Grillo, and the council president for the year 2016 will be Dan Buchanan. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. With that, I'm going to open the public portion for questions or comments on any and all issues. Are there any questions or comments? Being no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to close the public portion.
Mayor, I move the close the public portion?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. With that, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, everyone. Happy New Year.[1781.41][1781.41](APPLAUSE).